It's true.
You hear that?
There he is, there he is.
I'm fine, how are you?
Steve, can you hear us? Steve? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
It's like Bill Cook ever seen me.
Can you sign in?
I mean.
Thirty?
We said we would have.
I say that.
Okay.
I don't know.
He's got the hate. I'll try.
She's a nice lady.
Yeah, three, three stars.
Yeah. Can Steve hear you? No, but it's that.
I can hear y'all, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you.
As long as he's in here, that's right. He said he could. No, I think I'm working. They're not working, is there? On the.
I will, yeah.
All this meeting to order of the Oak Hill City Council for July 11th, 2022, 5:30, City Hall. The clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Daniel Wright.
Here.
Council Large Tom Oxley.
Here.
Ward one Diane Janey.
Here.
Krista Hodges.
Here.
David Perry.
Here.
From Ward two Steve Hazlitt.
Here.
Charles Smallwood.
Here.
Benitez Jackson.
Here.
Everyone's here, Mr. Hazlitt is with us from by way of Zoom. The invocation tonight will be offered by the Reverend Michael Hicks of the Jones Avenue Church of God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Jackson.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, to come together, to work together as citizens and leaders in our community. We thank you for the freedom that we have in this country, and we thank you that you are here in this place, and we ask for your leadership and your wisdom here tonight. Lord, I also ask for your special wisdom to be with Domete as she assumes a new role tonight. I pray that you will bless her and continue to guide her and watch over her in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Let religion just be the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its shoulders. For God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Which brings us now to the oath of office for our new city manager, which will be officiated by the former city manager. Bill Hannah Bass will administer the oath to Domete Johnson. I will say this. This town was incorporated in 1903, 119 years ago, and tonight you will hear, you're going to hear, I guess, four words that have never been uttered in this city government before. Madam City Manager Johnson.
State your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Manager in and for the city of Oak Hill, Fayette County, West Virginia, to the best of my skill and judgment. So help me God.
Mayor, mayor, could we pause to get some pictures for these ladies? Perhaps their pastors like to be with her as well. And former city manager. I'd like to ask that council be permitted to take a picture with Domete as well.
So granted.
We now have a special presentation by Erin Reed, Coordinator of Economic Development for the city of Oak Hill. She's going to unveil a new video on the city of Oak Hill.
Hello, Mayor and Council, thank you very much for having me again to present this video. As you guys know, one of my goals in starting this position is to help promote the city, and this is one way that I thought would be a great idea to do that, and with our lovely friends at JJ and N Media, JD Belcher and his crew, a relatively new multimedia company to move to the city of Oak Hill. We have done that, so I present to you the easy to find, hard to leave Oak Hill video. Again, I'd like to say a special thank you to JD Belcher and his crew at JJ and N Multimedia.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed, it's very well done, thank you. Which now brings us to the reading and approval of minutes, is there a motion regarding that?
So moved, Mayor.
Their second.
Second.
Property movement second to approve minutes as presented, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote to motion, all is in favor, six puffs saying ah.
Ah.
Those opposed, no, motions agreed to, seven zero. Treasurers report, is there a motion regarding that?
I make a motion, will you approve?
I'll say.
Property movement second, the treasurer's report, be approved as presented, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote to motion, all is in favor, six puffs saying ah.
Ah.
Those opposed, no, motions agreed to, seven zero, which now moves us to correspondence, Madam Clerk. All right, no correspondence, which brings us down to citizens' comments. The citizens' comments will be limited to three minutes. I also expect it to be, there's some here coming here for the bank, some against the bank, which has been a major issue for a meeting or two, so I expect civil interaction, no disruptive behavior like we've had to deal with, so. I'll make it clear upfront, three minutes, you'll be timed here, because some people told me they didn't get enough time, or so-and-so got too much time, so I thought we'll just time it at three minutes. You can see how much time you have when you're speaking, so if you see you're down to 40 seconds, you can sum it up. There will be a sound. I don't know if it's a buzzer or a bell or what it is. A buzzer, all right? I haven't heard it buzz yet, so we'll find out tonight, is it set on three minutes?
Yes.
All right, the first speaker is Gladys Smith. Right over here, please, Ms. Smith.
I'm here on behalf of a trailer and a camping trailer that is on Burnside Street. I am sure the city is aware of this trailer. We have contacted the city, we have contacted the council. As of yet, we have gotten no results, and we want to know why.
Gladys, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Where is it located?
On Burnside Street.
But where, where at on Burnside?
Okay, you go down, and let me see. My son lives in the last house, Mrs. Wint lives in the next house, there's a trailer here, and it's behind basically the two houses right there. The city has been contacted on this several times.
And you want it demolished?
We would like it removed. There has been nobody in it for at least five to six years. There is rats, we're afraid of snakes. We have small children that play there. There is no water, there's no power. The police have been contacted on it. So we'd just like to know what's going on.
Ms. Smith, do you happen to know who the owner is, you don't have to say their name?
The owner is in Myrtle Beach, from what I understand, and I think she has been contacted, and I've also heard that she has come up here and paid fines. Now, I mean, that's hearsay. My time is going.
Mayor, if I understand proper protocol.
Yes, sir.
That has been expressed in the past, it is that we will take notes and we will not create a dialogue with speakers.
That's technically the way it's been. I do think Mrs. Smith here, the Mr. Light, who is the code enforcement person, maybe he should go take a look at this situation, give a report.
I'm surprised he hasn't been told by the city to have taken it on already.
I believe there's been citations issued by Mr. Light, I'm speaking with him. I think the owner came in once and maybe cleaned up a little bit. The city has been cutting the grass most of the time. I mean, I don't know where we're at with, as far as what else can be done other than maybe city managers store it, see if it meets the criteria to have it demolished or tore down. I'd explain to the ladies that's here concerned about it, the right of way and property lines are not not a city issue, it's not a law enforcement issue.
Well, that's not.
I think anything left to do would be to score it and see if the structural inspection board will look at the score and see if it meets the criteria to remove it or demolish it.
I'll look at it tomorrow, Mr. Kirk and I, and we'll also talk with Mr. Light to see where he is in the process.
Okay. Then will somebody contact me and let me know what's going on?
We will.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, thank you. Valerie, you have the next. Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
You're next.
I'm John Garvin, I spoke last month, citizen of Ward one, I'll try to talk fast. I think we need to go through the numbers again on the purchase of BB and T Building. Gray Mill Holding paid $300,000 for the building four years ago. Nothing's been done to the building. All you have to do is go to the left side of the building and see the deterioration, it's easy to see. The building was appraised at 454, the city's offering 675. Now, there's not been too much accountability or transparency or openness about how this figure was reached at, just kind of 675, 675. Okay, one other number we need to think about is this present building's 15,000 square feet. It's 5,900 square feet at the BBT Bank though. So we're all country people, and it's hard to get 10 pounds of beans into a 3.8 pound bag. But so a few things have happened since the last meeting. The day after the last meeting, there was a photo op where they put up a banner that said the future home of Oak Hill City Hall. Now, this is before, this is rather premature because the final vote had been made. So it's like, you know, what's going on there? The main question I wanted to ask is just, how did they determine the valuation and to pay this much? Because these people are going to make $375,000 profit on a building that they've more or less just let sit. They've done nothing to it, there's been no development done. This is pure speculation, and it's supposed to be a showplace, a centerpiece, I guarantee you. I was able to go inside the building, and the inside is as bad a shape as the outside. At least the way they're letting it deteriorate. Now, mold in the basement, there's obviously been water trouble, this has been going on for years. This was going on for years before the bank even changed hands. So, but no one seems to want to answer these questions, so I was able to talk to a city official about the transaction, and I was told democracy's at work. We got the votes, it's a done deal. Well, I wanted to know how the deal was done. And what it came down to was, we could either pay 4.5 million for another city hall, or they know that's impossible, they just throw that out there, or we can settle for the 675. So I asked how the 675 was arrived at. They said, well, they wanted a million, 875,000, this is the best we could do. I said, well, no, the best you could do is maybe walk away from the deal. So I just think that before this is voted on, the councilman who voted yes should explain how this number, 675, was arrived at. Because they're spending our money. This is not a private deal, this is a public deal. And they should be accountable to the citizens. So at least explain to us, if you made a deal like this, why are you paying these people so much money? So that's my last thing to say, I guess. God bless the city of Oak Hill. They will get some answers.
Geneva Smith.
Yes, I live on Burnside Street, off of Rosedale Street. Okay. It has came to attention about all of these people that has been going down there dropping cats and dogs. I have to take care of them, it's connected to my land. It has not been lived in for five years. The city has cut the grass, it has no power, no water, no sewage, no nothing down there, it is just a shell. It needs to be tore down and hauled off. And Mr. Light, Mr. Light, he is aware of it. The police is aware of it, because I call the police all the time. Because the man that I gave the right of way, Mr. Smith, that lives behind me, that bought the house off of Duncan, Mrs. Duncan, they block him in all the time. The walkers, the druggies. I'm tired of it, I'm tired of being woke up in the middle of the night, my dog's barking because there's people running away from that trailer. There's nothing in that trailer, and another thing too. I know everybody in here has got to be animal lovers. Why is the speed limit 25 on that little one-lane road, and we can't even get the potholes fixed? I still got a lot of time. And I was threatened to be arrested because I called this one cop, this nice cop over here helped me. I called him honey when he was down there that day. Sexual harassment? I tried to go back up to the police station to talk to Mr. Wiseman, but he was, he was on vacation. I never could get a hold of Bill Hannah Bash, and I hope that Deanna will get a hold of her, she's a nice lady, and I'm glad she has been sworn in. But I want to know the answer, why has this trailer not been taken out right after I called the cops? She was in that following weekend, she came up here and she paid five fines. Five. That's enough to get rid of that trailer, and the camper license plate. I don't even know if she's paying taxes on it, it went out in 2017. Can anybody answer me that question? Why hasn't it been moved? When all of y'all have known about it? The police station, oh lord, my three minutes is up.
Sorry.
I got more.
Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Three minutes has expired. Appreciate the lady.
Catherine Holstein.
Catherine Holstein, is she here? All right.
All right.
I can't live on that street. I'm here in support of the trailer, the address eleven seventy-three Burnside. Um, I've been a renter there for the last three and a half years. I just recently purchased a property, uh, on that street. It is going to be an issue that I'm going to be dealing with. It is a breeding ground for squatters and junkies. I've got two kids, um, snakes, um, insects infestations, um, mold issues, um, the building structures, the, the garage that's there is getting ready to fall down. Uh, we have windstorms, the doors, it's, it's just a, a eyesore and a nuisance. The city is constantly, they've got to come there again and cut the grass. It's past Chinese. It's atrocious. Um, my other concern is I have, between the police being called for that, I've had to call police and animal control many, many times over a loose dog on the street. The dog has a by, extensive bite history. I just had to chase him off again two days ago. I seen him out again today. The owners have been fined over and over again. The dog has been taken away. The dog is neglected, not taken care of. The dog has bit my child. And I'm getting ready to move from one property to another property where that dog is used to roaming all the time. I won't tolerate it. I have a dog that I maintain myself. I've got two. Um, I'm tired of tying up the police department and animal control over this issue. And I won't, I won't put up with another bite. So those are my concerns as.
Thank you. I don't know if I can read this next name. Is it? Is it two six five Kelly Avenue? Who lives at Kelly Avenue? Let's see, can you read it?
Oh, it's Angel. Angel Leg, but she's on the agenda later for.
Well, she's already. Okay, so, yeah, you don't have to, you want, you want to speak now or you can get to that issue? We get to the next issue, Ms. Leg, you can speak then, because you're already on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Strayers? Yeah, I see Jessie there. Yeah, I'll let Jessie. You've got to talk faster than Jimmy, Jessie.
Listen, I, my parents have owned a business in Oak Hill since nineteen forty-four. Danny, your dad worked for us. You know that. We know everybody. But I own the Coffee Club in Oak Hill. That's the road going down to Mendon. The grass is grown, you can't see, getting around the bridge. So the other day, a Mr. Ward that worked out at, uh, out of Glen Jean up on the National Guard Army bought a son, uh, one of those mobile houses. Couldn't get through the bridge, so he parked it on my property. There's no signs or nothing there. The kids used to catch the buses. There used to be steps up to the side to come out on the main road. That's when it was the old Club Madrid. Then it was Agnes's Town Tavern. You can't see around it. The traffic is bad. You got four million dollars from governor to do infrastructure down there. The kids can't catch the buses. The bus signs laying on the road. It's a dangerous situation. So you want to buy a building worth seven hundred thousand, let's correct our infrastructure first. And the whole side where that house burned down is falling in. That's Main Street of Oak Hill. And if you come out to, I got pictures. Anybody wants to see them, I'll gladly show it to them. But we need to clean it up before you start purchasing things that maybe have astronomical value. Let's clean up our streets and our, our, our roads and everything. But going down to Mendon, it is atrocious going through the bridge. You know it. Everybody's seen it. The grass is taller than me. That's not saying much, but it's still taller than me. But, uh, that, that's about all. I just think that property. And if you look in the creek, the Arbuckle Creek going under Mendon, there's motors, there's parts of cars and everything. Nothing has been touched down there. And I've owned that property since two thousand and four. So before you spend a lot of money, let's do some cleanup. And make it safe for the citizens, especially the kids. If you're a teacher, you know those kids need to catch those buses. That's it.
Thank you, Jessie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ayers?
How y'all doing this evening? Um, I just want to know if somebody on city council can tell me, uh, everybody keeps saying this bank deal is a done deal. I was told that the city council cannot approve the funds past your term limit, that it's got to go through the, uh, planning board to get the finances. Is anybody aware of when that meeting is? Or can you find out and tell me?
Our meeting of the building commission will be on Wednesday at six o'clock.
This Wednesday?
Yes.
At six o'clock? I mean, I stay in the profit from it, but if you look at the crowd you got here tonight, you got to park a half mile up the road. I mean, we're, you're going to take away from all the businesses on Main Street when we move to that location. I stand the benefit. I got a parking lot. I'm going to probably sell the city of Oak Hill because you're going to need the additional parking. But, I mean, the former, the former city manager sa- sat there and, uh, everybody thought he did a great job, which I think overall Bill did a lot of good things. But he was against it. So, I mean, I don't know if we need to revisit it. There's a lot of people that are not happy with the money that's being spent. You don't just spend two hundred thousand over appraisal without somebody bidding against you. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim L. Aleshire?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. When I first come in, people go to church, know what I'm speaking about. I was going to get me a seat in the back, but it's all crowded, so I'd sit up front. But listen, I'm right off about, I'm, I'm dead against, uh, purchasing this building. Yes, uh, as John said earlier, it's, it's been sitting empty for four years. A lot of work to be done to it. You've never given us, uh, the amount that's going to cost to renovate it. I mean, it's, uh, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars plus, uh, who knows, they may come up with like two million dollars, not unless you've got an answer tonight. Have y'all come up with one? And also with the building committee, I understand that one was being sick and they supposed to be met last week, but, uh, I think it's quite unfair to, to vote on this thing tonight. It's going to put the pressure on the building committee, say, cities will say, "Well, we've already got approval. We'll spend six hundred and seventy-five thousand." And the building committee said, "Well, I'm not sure which way we need to go on this." And, you know, to me, it's unfair to the, to the building committee to have to, uh, to face that. We're all human and we know what pressure is sometimes. Uh, and we talking about the, you know, I'm all for Oak Hill building. I'm all for that. I've been here forty years. I've lived in the same house for forty years, going down toward Mendon. Building right across from me is Ace. They have, they have Ace Homes, they have advertisement Ace Water. If we think that the people from out of town is concerned about a city hall, when they go right down past the building that, that advertises Ace, and I'm the one that cleans the, the brush and stuff off of it, I didn't this year because I've never got, and I don't, I don't do it for the appreciation and nothing like that, but i- if they're not willing to come up and clean this building off themselves and the roof's blowing off and, and I've, I've spoken before that if, if, uh, if that roof blows off that building and hits someone, causes an accident, Ace is going to be responsible for. So I don't understand, you know, it's, at this building, it's, you know, you, you go from fifteen thousand square foot down to fifty-nine hundred square foot, you want more room? I don't know where you're going to get it out of that building. And if you could come up with the estimation of what it's going to cost to renovate that building. I mean, I was sitting here tonight and it's, and I'm not pointing the blame on anyone, but if, there, there seems like there's no, no one wants to respond to anything. Maybe, maybe you were after we all speak or maybe just, you know, we'd like to know. And it's not behind closed doors or anything. I, we'd like to know what it's going to cost to do the electric in there, to, to set all the computers in there, to, to bring division in there, to, to set up different offices and everything. How do you go serve, how you go, uh, take care of the water problem down in the basement? I mean, these are a lot of things, but we need the answers because you serve us. You was elected to serve us.
Thank you, Ms. Aleshire. Michelle Riser?
Hi, I'm here to talk about the BBNT Bank also. But the first thing I want to say is that I'm actually kind of happy that we've agreed not to interact with dialogue with the speakers and the council. Because the first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to piggyback off what that gentleman said right there. He's correct. Unless you're in a bidding war, to pay two hundred and some thousand dollars, there's no reason for, but there is. It's padding someone's pockets is what it's called. Secondly, what I would like to know is, we know that there's an estimate of one point five and upward for the renovation on this. Where is that money coming from? Is it being pulled from any other area within the city? Um, I have, I'm kind of tardy to the party, but I found out a little bit about this last week and I started a change dot word petition. All I did was post it on my Facebook. I'm by no means Facebook famous. And we've gotten well over a hundred signatures in just a matter of days of people that are against this and people that have the same questions. So if you want to write these down, since you can't answer me, maybe you can answer the press tomorrow. So the first question is, why are we paying over two hundred and some thousand dollars for the building? The second reason is, have you done a cost benefit analysis for this? And if you have, public would like to be able to see that cost benefit analysis. Um, the next one is, why are you moving anyway? This building is, is safe, it's clean, it's, you know, obviously had some upgrades and things to it. If you need more room, don't run out the upstairs, utilize it. Um, so pretty much the building's just going to serve as a facade. It's just somebody's ego that wants to have the big bank in town. Now, if you're worried about the bank sitting there empty and it will be dilapidated, I'm pretty sure there's an ordinance in Oak Hill and there's a beautification committee that finds and requires business owners to upkeep their buildings so that it doesn't, you can become dilapidated. So we have to worry about that. And if we're going to worry about that and say this is like a prominent building, how about Collins High, Collins Middle? We're letting it sit there and look like crap. Let's take care of it. Let's do something with it. If we're so worried about what the city's going to look like for people coming through, we're not doing a very good job. And then also, all of these people, just the very few people that have spoke, pretty sure I could quantify one point five million dollars and everything and take care of every single person here. The upgrades, things that are needed to be done, the, the sidewalks, the not having community centers for children, not having, which, there's so much, and I've got twenty-five seconds. Um, we also want to know what's going to happen to the old town hall building. Are you going to save one building from being empty to make another one? Quantify that. So basically, I want you guys to think about those questions and I also would like to know and ask a question of you guys and you'll remember this next time you vote. Are our city leaders, being good stewards with the funds entrusted to them that they are supposed to utilize to benefit the community?
Thank you, Ms. Riser.
Mayor, you indicated the start of the meeting that there would be no tolerance of reaction to comments.
True, true. We don't need.
So I'd ask that we follow that protocol.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Becky Sullivan? Becky Sullivan, is she here?
Sorry, I wasn't ready. Okay. Um, I'm here as a CBB representative for the New River Gorge CBB, AKA Fayette County CBB. And I just wanted to talk to you about the bear scavenger hunt. Um, you all may be aware of it by now, but the CBB has published a scavenger hunt booklet that coordinates with the Oak Hill city bears, the, the bears that came out of the beautification committee and they're located all over the city. Um, the scavenger hunt booklet has twelve clues in it. They will lead you to, I know we have more bears than that. There's like twenty-five bears now, I believe, but there's going to be more and more coming throughout the year. So, um, we have a landing page on our website that's dedicated to the scavenger hunt booklet. So I brought it up for you all to take a look at. Is it okay if I distribute them after I'm done? Um, okay. The twelve clues will take you to the different bears around city of Oak Hill, hopefully puts you into those businesses. Um, and then you can go to the website to put in your answers and you will be entered to win a five hundred dollar honey pot of gift cards, gift certificates for things to do around the area. If you go to the New River Gorge Visitor Center, Frozen Barn, the Library, Pinheads, you can pick up these booklets and the kids or adults, whoever's playing, um, can get the trinkets that we have to give away. So we do have pins and stickers and tattoos to give away to all participants. And then you can also take selfies with the bears to get extra entries to win the grand prize. The grand prize will be announced, um, Labor Day weekend. And, um, I'm glad there's so many people here tonight from the city of Oak Hill because you can pick these scavenger hunt booklets up at the New River Gorge Visitor Center, uh, located on Euler Avenue. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would clap. They said no interaction.
Oh, I'm going to move those two. Okay. Ms. Sullivan, when does this start? And when does it end? Oh, Labor Day? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Jenny Krikraft?
Everybody said basically what I was interested in, but what I'm going to say is not criticism, it is just concern. In twenty eighteen, the building was purchased for three hundred thousand. It was appraised in October for four hundred and fifty-four thousand and the purchase price now is six seventy-five. That's, um, two hundred and twenty-one thousand over the appraisal price. I was told that there is no mold, but there is mold. There's moderate mold on the first two floors. And I was wondering, do you have an estimate on remodeling the building? And you know, from doing your own remodeling, you have to add three or four times that price because you open a door and you've got a problem. You open this door and you've got another problem. So I re, I redid a house in Charleston and it was supposed to be eighty-five thousand dollars and it ended up two hundred and fifty thousand by the time they got through. So you have to be aware of that. And as far as this property goes, I wonder, has anybody checked with Herbert Jones's will? Because it seems that I remember that as long as this property remained, the city building, the city hall, that it was to remain with the city. If it does not, I think there are other things that it is to go to, back to the family maybe. So that's something you may want to check. I was also told that having the bank building as the city hall would bring multiple businesses into our city. The building has been there since nineteen seventy-seven. How many businesses has it brought in so far? That's something you need to think. That's something you need to think of. And I'm just afraid that all the facts have not been considered. All the, all the ups and the downs and the future and what it's going to cost in the future. And I think, I think it's something that you really need to think about. I love Oak Hill too. I want to see it grow. I want to see it beautiful, but we have to be smart. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McGuffin, Darren McGuffin.
Let's read over this letter briefly. It is addressed to the city of Oak Hill and I figured it would best to deliver it directly to the council. To whom it may concern, this letter is to formally request the creation of a government access channel between the city of Oak Hill, West Virginia and Altice USA Incorporated, DBA Optimum. Section 611, 47 CFR, 761505 of the Federal Communication Act requires Altice, Altice USA Incorporated, DBA Optimum to provide PEG, Public Education Government Channel Capacity to the city of Oak Hill, West Virginia Code 24D dash 1 dash 3 Municipal Cable Franchise Authority, with a minimum technical support. Blue Horizon Media LLC, DBA New River Network, shall provide all technical means in addition to financial operating support at no cost to the city of Oak Hill. The government access channel shall be based on a high definition video platform with all equipment provided by Blue Horizon Media LLC, meaning a minimum resolution of 1280 by 720p, 59.94 frames per second. Optimum HD channel support shall be dependent on available QAM system bandwidth. HD support may require the channel be moved to a higher tier to accommodate the needed bandwidth. This channel shall provide 100% West Virginia created programming with a emphasis on Oak Hill and Fayette County. Local businesses slash churches will have access to independent programming at a minimal cost. Area schools will have independent access at no charge to the school or Fayette County Board of Education. Blue Horizon Media LLC shall act as the liaison between the city of Oak Hill and suddenly create said channel. I formally request the city of Oak Hill to add this item on a future agenda. Such channel would be a major asset to the city with no cost involved in creating or maintaining a government access channel. I have a few seconds left. Basically, what this letter is, is a request for the city of Oak Hill to enter into our agreement with what is now Optimum, formerly Sudden Link, in forming a government access channel. In federal law, it requires the local cable provider to provide the cable franchise authority with three channels, public access, education access, and government access. So the city of Oak Hill is entitled to three separate channels on the, on the local cable system. And all that requires is a majority vote, a vote by the council and a notice be sent to Altice USA Incorporated for access on the local cable system. So also included with that letter is a bullet point of some of the features that our company offers. And if you'd like me to get a formal presentation in a future meeting, I'd be more than willing to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuffin.
We have another speaker with, I think is similar to what Mr. McGuffin is talking about, JD Belcher. Want to speak?
Thank you. I'm JD Belcher, owner of JJ and Multimedia. And I just wanted to introduce myself and let Oak Hill know how much we appreciate you all choosing us to work on the campaign and Aaron Reed for reaching out for the tourism video. Basic overview of our company is, for nine years of my life, I was a surface coal miner and I worked in Hanover, West Virginia, a place called Coal Mountain. And I always wasn't a real good coal miner, so I kind of taught myself how to make videos. And throughout that, fast forward to several years later, we started JJ and Multimedia with no clients in 2016. And now we have nine full-time salary team members. The average salary is median household income of West Virginia because I knew I didn't want to start this if we couldn't afford to pay people living wage. They all have opportunity for health insurance. They have retirement plan and just really proud of what we've been able to do. And we, our business is actually located directly across from the BBNT building in the Belland Building. And it was a redeveloped building. Gene Kissler is our landlord, some of you all may know him. But we're just really appreciative to be here and you all taking chances on investments like that. I've always been, story is really important to me, us being from West Virginia. You know, too often we're at the end of negative narratives when it comes to the stories that are told about us. So that kind of is why our company was born, was trying to reframe and redevelop that narrative and share the positive things that West Virginia has to offer. So yeah, just appreciative for you all taking the chance on that. And I hope the community enjoys the tourism campaign we created. And Erin is an amazing person, so she's going to really do big things for the town. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher.
Thank you. That concludes public speakers. Now moves us into a minute from the minutes. I'm going to pass that tonight and move to unfinished business. One, one, one thing to mention here. Tomorrow night at 5:30 in this chamber, the Oak Hill Girls Softball Team. Ms., Ms. Reed, you want to say something about that, please?
Yes, they, we had a Oak Hill Girls Softball Team Little League, they take nine, they're all making it to the state tournament this year. So that, that will happen this weekend and the mayor is going to read the team of proclamations tomorrow here at 5:30.
We're going to present 16 proclamations tomorrow, three to the coaches and 13 to the team. Here tomorrow, you're all invited at 5:30 for that event from, which is a, really a big thing that this can happen from the girls from Oak Hill going to, to the championships. So you're all invited tomorrow, 5:30. Now moves us to unfinished business. Number one, progress report of property located 526 Gatewood Road, map 13 parcel 139, owned by Property Traders. Madam City Manager?
Mr. Love, are you on the meeting with us? He did join. He is there. Can you hear us? Now, can you speak? Well, I have to read his chats. Oh, he's connecting.
Okay, can you hear? If you could please unmute that phone number that says 412-1220, that's me on the phone.
Okay, I have, it shows that you are.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, if, if you could please mute that one that says Mark, but instead unmute my phone. It's the number starting with 904.
Okay, I'm Mark, I muted Mark. And the other number is, other number is unmuted.
It looks like you're only able to hear me through the computer audio. I'm trying to talk through the phone to avoid the feedback though.
We're not, we're not hearing feedback, are you, do you have feedback?
We're fine, why don't you proceed?
All right, everybody, I have a little feedback, but I'll proceed, it doesn't bother me.
Now it's asking you to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have feedback, but we'll, we'll proceed, that's fine.
Okay, I'm showing the, the pictures that you sent.
Okay, very good. So to start, this is the outside of the building. If you could go back to those photographs. Or yeah, that's fine, proceed through these, these are some interior photos. Okay, this is a good photo to pause on. So these last two, these were the blueprints of the building interior. And this section that's marked orange, this was the fire damage section. The rest of the building is, and the pictures that you just saw concerns this section to the right, which is the office where you see the entry door, the bathroom, you have the two office suites that are connected. Above that box was the garage, but of course, that's on the basement floor, which was the photo, one back to the left. And here you go, on that same right-hand side, you'll see you have the garage right there in the furthest right. Essentially, if, to everyone who's never been in this building to explain it to you while we're looking at this photo, everything else you see here to the left, all these like compartments, these are all basement rooms that are, that are really just storage. There's interesting things down there, there's a lot of items of history. Lard buckets, for example. I wanted to have someone bring some in to you all, there, there's actually dozens that are in good condition. And other things that are really not significant. And if you could please flip to the photo, one more to the right. Oh, back to the other blueprint one, please. Here we go. And the portions of this building that were really ever serving us for commercial use was this front section, which includes the fire section and the section to the right of it. But they were essentially two separate office suites. And I say that because there's only one door connecting the two. The one to the furthest right has its own bathroom, as you can see, and the one to the left, which also had a separate storefront entrance, had its own bathroom. Now, of course, that one to the left is decommissioned because of the fire. The sections behind the one to the left are also similar to the basement areas, just raw storage. A lot of storage, there's plenty of storage space. I mean, one of the downsides is that it's just very compartmentalized. It's not necessarily wide open, but that's just the structure of the building. So at this time, we, we have power, we have a furnace installed, we have, our water's not perfect, that's still a problem. We have water service, but we're still working out the kinks and I don't know where they landed today. They were, we had a request for the town to turn the water on again today so we can hammer out where the leaks are coming from. But we're not far from basically having that office suite to the right, ready to be utilized. The office suite to the left, the fire damaged one, I'm not convinced it's, it's necessary to be an office suite again, but that's in the eye of the beholder. It could very well be refurbished to just be a storage area. It really comes down to what's the demand for a commercial storefront at this particular location. The garage picture has a lot of utility for open storage and that could be leased and used in conjunction with the office suite on the right. All of these other areas, the ground level in the basement storage areas, they could be used essentially by whoever for whatever, whether that be leased separately or be connected with whoever's leasing the office suite to the right. Similarly, someone may want to just lease the garage space to have an area to drive into and easily access things, but not use the commercial storefront on the right. Where, I think where we are now is we're at a good point to just perhaps have you all task the town compliance inspector bill to do a walkthrough and say whether the way we have it now is, is appropriate for use and possibly it could go into service. Someone could begin using any of those spaces I just described.
Anyone on council have any questions for, for Mark?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Obviously, he continues to work on the building. My concern at this point is, if I'm correct, the left side of that building, looking at it and the backside, which a couple of months ago, I think we were told that they're getting rid of the brush and going to paint that. I don't think there's been any matching paint applied to it at this point. Is that true, Mark?
Thanks for the question. So painting the backside, we did all the concrete blockwork. If you recall at our last meeting, we had it all cleaned out, refilled, regrowed it. And that masonry company is finished. We did not paint the backside yet, I'm sorry I didn't include photos. Because, you know, for years, that, that backside, it was just never painted, it was just raw cinder block. Now, it's true, our painters did start to paint it and didn't finish it. And that's something we can do, but it's unfortunate they started it because if, if you know how paint goes with concrete block, you, you utilize probably five to 10 times the paint just because the block is just hungry to eat it up and absorb it. The other issue here with painting is that the front of the building, and I'm glad you went to this photo, it's not necessarily a paint job of everyone's taste. Someone put a little creative brush here, not exactly the pattern we wanted to go out with, but depending on the interest in who would utilize this space, they might envision a completely different color and I don't think that's hard to do.
I guess what concerns me, it was represented to us that the entire exterior of the building would be painted.
You're correct about that and we have no problem finishing that off. We've spent most of our time though on the interior, making sure all the light switches, plugs, things like that work. So I have no problem staying on the line to continue the painting.
And I commend you for that. And I guess the, one of the primary reasons I'd like to paint it is the, the people who live out there and the appearance it gives, is a much more attractive appearance if the entire building's painted. And as you said, someone who would least survive the building may want to repaint. And that could be an option, but. Personally, as a councilman, I like to see what was committed to complete.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any others?
How often does he have to do that, to make progress reports?
That was my next question to you. When do you want another progress report?
I think we need to ask Mark what he thinks is reasonable. In terms of what he's heard today.
I think we, we can have it painted. I would say 30 days. I'd ask for 60 days, just in case there's intervening circumstances, but. Between 30 today, 30 to 60 days after that, you know, we, we get towards winter, so we need to get it done before it starts getting cooler anyhow.
I personally be good for 60 days.
Okay, so we'll have you on the agenda again in September.
Yes.
I personally be good with a written report. There you go.
Okay, if you just want to write a report and email it to me. And then we'll have some pictures.
Very good. Well done.
There's, there's a motion and second. Is that to accept this report? Or is there a need for this? We just heard the report.
I would move that we extend it 60 days. And as a fellow councilman says, ask that a written report along with pictures be provided in September.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Property movement second. Any more discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All is in favor, signify saying ah. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Seven zero, which moves us to number two. Consideration to adopt a resolution for the city to have the following structures demolished. A Harris Street off Broadway Avenue, map seven parcel two four oh owned by Andrew Thomas. And B one oh five Rocklick Road, map fifty nine J parcel thirty three owned by Brooke Armond Trout.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt a resolution to have the following structures demolished.
A and B. Second. Property moving second. Any more discussion? Hearing them, we vote the motion. All is in favor, signify saying ah. Those opposed, those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Seven zero. Down moves us to number three. Council review the following properties that have material debris remaining after being demolished. Two sixteen Chestnut Avenue, map thirty two parcel seventy owned by Clifford Bragg. And B two fifteen Mayfair Avenue, map thirty two parcel one six two owned by Betty Atkins and Raymond Jones.
This is the picture of Chestnut Avenue. And what, what we have done is prepared an order for your consideration. To give the property owners notice that they have 30 days to remove the material. Or we will do it and place a lien on the property. The order, this is the order for Clifford Bragg on Chestnut. And it has the details. We started this in January of two thousand nineteen.
Obviously, obviously, this is something's been brought for counsel for a month or so, and the mayor's expressed an interest in. I would move that we accept the recommendation of the city manager to proceed with 30 day notification for demolition.
I'll second.
That's for A and B?
A and B.
Yes.
All right, property moved in second. Any more discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion. All is in favor, signify saying ah. All right. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Seven zero, which moves us to number four. Spirit of the Oak Hill Award Committee Progress Report, Councilwoman Hodges.
So we met, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. When did we meet? It was. On July, no, June.
June twenty.
Seventh.
Seventh, yes.
We met, we have finalized our form, which we will be getting out. I need to finish the final touches and then the mayor and myself and. Remember his name.
Tim Jordan.
Helped us pick out some awards, looked at some awards.
Yes.
So we'll have that, that form out shortly for everyone to start filling out and submitting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I think our committee has met four times.
Yes.
To discuss this. One of our members, Debbie Bush on the front row there. And Tim Jordan, Krista Hodges, myself, and Dwayne Hopkins have. I think we've stayed on task, working, working up the spirit of Oak Hill Award. And I think that we'll soon be putting it out there, the format. And the people can fill out and send in or go online and do nominating people you think are deserving of the awards. And there'll be more information on that out very soon. I think we're going to present the first two in October. Is that right? And then the next two in April. I think that's what the plan was. Okay, thank you. I guess, do we need a motion for that? Unless you want a motion to accept it.
I move that we accept the report.
That she just now gave. Is her second?
Second for motion.
Property move and second. Any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion. All is in favor, signify saying ah. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Seven zero. Which now moves us to number five. Consideration of ordinance authorizing the acquisition of and the design, construction, and equipping of additions. Betterments and improvements to certain real estate located at one oh one Main Street Oak Hill, West Virginia. The issuance by the Oak Hill Building Commission of lease revenue bond series two oh two two. To finance the above described purchase and design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of the real property and the cost of issuance thereof. And the leasing of the real property by the city from the building commission to serve as a city hall. Second reading.
Mayor, I move that we table this matter till we have a recommendation from the building commission.
I'll second that.
Property moved, property moved in second that this number five be tabled. We, the clerk will call the roll.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, discussion, yes.
Mayor, I oppose the, the suggestion. Obviously, this discussion started in two thousand eighteen. At that time, Mr. Hazlett, Mr. Fox was on council, Ms. Jane. At that time, they all supported the proposal. We began discussion on this. In. Twenty one. And I have information here and documentation to show that we've been very transparent. People had, obviously had every opportunity to be here. And, you know, I just think we need to move forward. I think that as the code exists. Actually, the building commission, as communicated by Mr. Stump. Should really, and as Mr. Foul, Ms. Johnson told us, actually, we should take action before the building commission. And I think we've kicked this thing around since two thousand, not we, those persons preceding me. Since two thousand and eighteen, we've started on this thing. Back when and discussed it. We have received pro bono information from architecture engineers. We had a environmental study done, which refutes a great deal of what we've heard here tonight. I think this council has reacted responsibly, each member of it, in terms of due diligence. Almost a year ago. People, I've heard so much. Misinformation. I'm not heard. I've been told on Facebook that people have used that to communicate. So much. Misinformation. I don't think we'll ever correct. In terms of financing, I think the question was asked about financing. You know, almost a year ago, we proved the one percent sales tax. The projection at that time is that the self tax would generate, I think, the media can correct me. Seven hundred, eight hundred thousand up to one point two million?
But my projection was seven hundred and fifty thousand, I believe.
Okay. Okay, it wasn't, one point two wasn't part of it. That's why I asked you to correct me.
No, that wasn't.
So initially discussions with the bond council. As had been approved by this council, the entire council. That a negotiation. Slash. Investigation be conducted by those members, which was done. That information was brought back to council. There was a special meeting held. And every individual here had an opportunity to ask questions. The public was invited. It was advertised correctly. Uh, and people could have appeared. So it's not like this was sprung overnight. If you have taken time to read the architectural engineering report. Must, much of what has been said, again, does not reflect what was in the report as far as wiring, as far as. Computer, as far as the need to replace roofs, air conditioners. I think someone even said, you know, we ought to stay where we are because there's no fire escape from the set. Well, this building has no fire escapes. Someone even said that this, you know, we should stay here because there was no fire suppression system or sprinklers. Guess what? This building has not. Someone has inferred that there's only one egress from the basement. When you go through most of the buildings in town, there's only one egress from them as well. Also, windows are on that bottom floor. So. You know, hopefully, we've, we can clear up some of this this evening. And I agree with John Garb. It's a shame that in two thousand and eighteen, four years ago. The county, the city manager, certain members on this council were approached. When then it could have been bought for three hundred thousand dollars. There was no action. No one addressed it. No one took action. It's sat there for four years. A year later, I am sure in talking to some real estate agents, that even the, the appraisal we have is up. Anybody that's aware of property in Oak Hill, available in this area with the national park. Knows that buildings, houses are going far above what would be an ordinary market value. In terms of due diligence, the committee that was appointed met with, negotiated, and attempted to. Get the price at a lower level, lower rate, the gentleman, the gentlemen's in the committee said no. Now, so we can sit here. Another four years. And look at the building again, or look at construction again, and what will the price be then? There were naysayers when the police department was built. There were naysayers when the fire department was built. But everyone is proud of what has happened. I happen to have unsolicited on Facebook. Those persons who became aware of the Facebook postings. Called me and asked, and several other people, what can we do? I said, well, first of all. We don't want a town meeting with, or I don't want a town meeting where this group's here saying, we want, we want it, we don't want it. We don't need any more division. On this council or among the people of this town. There are approximately eight hundred, eight thousand people in the city of Oak Hill. Now, we've got probably maybe at the most, and I don't know what everyone's here for, thirty some people here tonight. Some for, maybe some against, and I don't, as the Baptist preacher or the church God preacher may say, you left. Don't show your hands. But in saying that, I have forty four letters. From doctors, lawyers, citizens, teachers, retired teachers. Who are in support of what this council is doing and what's done. And all, every one of them have different eligible ideas about why we should do it. I will not take the time to read. Everyone signed too. There's not unsigned letters here. So I won't take the time to do that. And someone said happy, everyone that wrote there said they're happy to see this progress. They said they were happy when the fire department, the police department, it created enthusiasm, enthusiasm, it created an interest. Now, the building had been looked at as a upscale sports bar at one time. It had been looked at and approved by this council, as I understand, prior to my time. For a marijuana dispensation, if I'm correct. And that part. Processing. And at that time, it would require an eleven or twelve foot fence in the middle of the city of Oak Hill to go around that building. It would be really attractive. Now, if you start at the Baptist church and you go to B and B Glass. There's approximately fourteen plus empty buildings. Now, I'm not saying purchase this building because it'd be empty. But I'm saying we need to do something that's futuristic. Something that would mark the downtown of Oak Hill with a building. That is premier in the middle of town that would be a billboard of what we're about. Now, someone has questioned whether the bank building suit them. Well, again, in terms of the council. Or members of the council trying to make a good, intelligent, eligible decision. Visited the Ravenswood City Council. Which presently occupies a BB and T building with very little change with plenty of office space. If you look at Montgomery, they changed buildings. They took a bank building. Now, what they paid, I don't know. The city of Smithers, I think, was given. The elementary school at Smithers. The city of Mount Hope. If you remember, their city hall was down where the water plant was, along with the police department. They've secured a new building over time. But I say if there's any incompetence, any unfortunate situation to the citizens of this town, and I agree with John. Was within two thousand and eighteen, the council had an opportunity to buy that building for three hundred thousand dollars and didn't do a thing. So we've lost the golf course. We've lost that. What else? What will it take? What? Pardon me.
Continue, Mr. Perry.
Now, we were charged with looking at this building, building new, or securing this building. Undoubtedly, this is not ADA compliant. We've got people office at the Trail Railroad Station. It's outlived its usefulness. And this history, this history will point to that. Nineteen seventy one, the council voted to build a new city hall. They bought the Clare property at thirty five thousand dollars. They appropriated ninety seven thousand for that, was unable to build, invested in this building. Former state, mouse drive. Only windmill runs on water. Forty, former city manager, Dick Martin, proposed a new city hall. So this isn't anything new. And this isn't anything that's been done behind closed doors. This isn't anything that hasn't been done openly and in the public. And it isn't anything that's been done as a result of vote of council. So I think to table this would be a mistake. It would only allow more time for misinformation, the dissemination thereof. And someone asked, when's the end of this? I think we have to have one more meeting and a public meeting. The building commission, I think, and I can be corrected on this, has to have three. With the same format. And as I said, just Thursday, was it Thursday? Thursday?
Thursday that we had one scheduled.
No, no, I'm saying when Bill Foul suggested our city attorney and recommended. That the building commission should wait until we act. Now, if you look at the statute and you look, you, you hear from Mr. Stump. The authority, the standing. The, the, not intention. The charge of the building commission is to oversee. The bond, to oversee the nature of it, the intent of it, the investment of it, and oversee the charges. Not to be a mini city council. And foremost, I would hate to see it become a mini city council. And each one here who was elected or appointed at some time or another. I, I, I would think that you would not like to see. Your position or ability diminished. By an appointed body rather than an elected body. So for those reasons, I oppose the gentleman's motion. I would ask that my colleagues vote against it and that we proceed with accepting this ordinance tonight. And I'll yield for any questions if someone would like to ask questions.
Most eloquently stated, Mr. Perry. Let me read to you from the code. You talked about the building commission and. The last paragraph of the ordinance reads. the last paragraph of the ordinance reads, provided however, that the commission shall not undertake any project or exercise any of the powers authorized by the provisions of West Virginia Code thirty-three in support or furtherance of any project unless such project is first approved by council and the commission first authorized to do so by a resolution duly adopted at a regular or special meeting and made of record in the minutes of such meeting. The meeting you just referred to, that you brought to this council for action, after meeting with John Stump, you read these things, not realizing it had not been a resolution and not been forwarded to the building commission, so you lumped it into one action. Is that correct?
I don't recall one action, but if I recall, the council did approve in that special meeting that that would suffice for the resolution. And I think you voted for it, Mr. Oxley.
We have not, I don't think so. So we can check the record if you wish, but let's, let's go back a little bit farther. You talked about all these opportunities to buy that bank. Where, where did we, what long, what way did we establish there was a need for another city hall? When was that decided? Not a single person went to any member of the city staff and said, are you, are these comfortable? Are these appropriate? Do you have enough room to work? Are your facilities okay? Is your air conditioning and heating okay? Nobody did, except one member of council after this action was begun, went to one of the members and, and kind of a apology, and the individual said it was a little bit too late for that. We, we're not in the business of having a town hall that is to attract tourists. And we bring up Fayetteville and Beckley, I guarantee you, there's not a single person stopping at a, at a visitor's center in Princeton wanting to know where the town hall in Fayetteville or the city hall is in Beckley. They don't come for those reasons. They come for attractions, they come for things for our youth. We need to do things. We, we've got a three point one million opportunity to build a community center and grants to pay for it. We've got a lot of opportunity to do some things, city park, we can pay for that. We do not need a new building. This one is perfectly fine, and I'll guarantee you, one of the things that John Stump is going to tell you, if you proceed with this, that you need to do a five G to retain an architect slash builder to come in here, take measurements, take the, the type of activity that takes place in these, these areas, and see how you're going to fit it in that building to determine what refurbishment you need. You can't just turn that over to a, you know, an employee, say, you know, fix this and fix that. You've got to have a plan. So that's why I said table it. You know, there's, the rush is not on. I don't know that there's a time limit, we have to buy this building. I am against it. But I will stand down if you prove to me that this can be done and it's wise use of the city funds.
I happen to agree with Mr. Oxley, I don't see a need for this building. We still don't have clear numbers on renovations. The McKinley report that we received gave us over a two hundred thousand dollar range. So there's no clear guidelines as to everything this building is going to possibly need. Until we know that, we're not being good stewards of city funds to approve this.
I have to agree with Tom and Chris on that. We are stewards of the city's money and I, I work here, live here, the city park needs renovated, there's so many other things that the funds could be used for. You know, to have a building in the center of town is not going to fix all the things that we need done for our, for our students, for our kids, for the people that live here. And the city park down there. I live right behind it now and, and I'm over there quite a bit and it's, it's startling to, that we don't have the facilities that we should have for a city this large. So I think the funds could be most utilized. Just like what the gentleman said, that we need improvements on our town, on our city, and we have the funds to do that. So I would like to see us do that with the funds.
One thing, I got a couple of things, um, I got a couple of questions. One, but one, I thought we, the city park, I know we can talk about city park, but I thought we've already allocated funds to do projects down there. Like, I don't think this is going to take away from those projects. I mean, I think the survey's out that.
About one point four million.
Yeah, we're putting one point four million down there. So I think we're already allocating funds toward the city park. Uh, but that's near here and there, but, um, I do agree with Tom on one thing, I think we do need to get somebody in here to, uh, measure and see if they can, we can fit it in there before we, before everything goes through. But I think we'll have time to do, that we'll have time to do that. If we, uh, because we got another reading, we'll have the beauty commission's recommendation before the next meeting, right? Should, right? Another recommendation, so it gives us a little time to get someone in there to do that. And maybe that will answer some questions that, you know, I still have and, and maybe some other people have. Uh, but I think we still have one more reading, then they have to have three readings, right?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll have a, okay.
And John Stump is on the Zoom call if anyone has questions of him. And he will be here in person on Wednesday.
Right.
That's six?
At six o'clock.
Mayor, I have one other statement, and I hope it will be my last one, but it may not be. As many comments have been made tonight about other projects, as my colleague has said, if I recall, and I can be corrected again, there are federal dollars, and I forget the amount, three point, or seven, three point.
For our Arca funding, three point four.
Which is the first appropriation, correct?
No, that's all, that's the total.
Won't be a second?
We've already received the second.
What was the?
The first, it was one point seven and then one point seven.
Okay, without, okay, okay, so three point something total. And at that time, this council then, if I'm correct, appeared to be of consensus that that, that money would be used, uh, no, that's not right either. Money has been appropriated for Virginia, Virginia Street Sidewalk, which was a past project that was from the state. The Oak Hill Fire Department addition is coming from where?
That'll come from the fire department funds.
Okay, and then that leaves three point.
Four, three million.
And part of the major discussion that it would be used for drainage, additional sidewalk repairs, and a premier city park. Uh, and Mr. Hannah Bass was part of that discussion, Dada, Mr. Smallwood and myself. And, and I said that to council as where? We made it very clear that it ought to be a gold gem for the city. And the Thrasher was supposed to have gotten back three models, correct, Mr. Smallwood? Which has not occurred, but the survey was done. And some of that involved the basketball court, a, a skateboard park, a diamond approach to the, to the, uh, ball diamonds. And I would like to just talk with Dr. Criminal, 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 criminal of the Methodist Church to see if they would be willing to give to the city that Major League Baseball field. Because they, it was given to them and they acquired it through state funds. Uh, so it shouldn't hurt them to, you know, we use it. If we go ahead and do that, then we could do a better job with that property. It's been suggested that we put a splash pool in. Which I think would be great. There's been some suggestion that we build a pool. I don't know whether anyone's priced the cost of a pool or the installation of a pool to see what that would cost and the future operating costs of that. But, uh, you know, or anyone has investigated the possibility of us co-partning with the swim club who are begging for members, that perhaps we could join them and provide access by citizens. We've got one pool. I don't think the city and citizenry can sustain two pools. So, you know, uh, but it has been dying. Monies have been allocated or there and available for other projects. And as I said earlier, of that projection, it's my understanding that perhaps the bond payment would be five to six thousand dollars for twenty, or depends on the number of years, which would leave, what, on the projection? Seventy some thousand dollars for other projects? So, uh, you know, it's, it's really not taking from any other projects. It's really not a direct tax on the citizens or an increase in tax. So, uh, again, uh, I think we should proceed. In the meantime, and also would say that in, as Krista has indicated, in the architecture preliminary promo bono report, it does indicate certain amounts for improvement. And at that time, we created a transition committee, which Mr. Hazlitt's on, uh, that was approved or known by this council, to bring back recommendations, which involve city employees. And while I respect the city employees and love the city employees, in thirty-five years, when the Fed County Board of Education decided to build new buildings, I don't know that they ever, 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 ever got the permission of the employees. Uh, so, you know, I respect the employees, we create the means whereby they can have input to the future and appreciate that. So, uh, I think it's time to move on, I move the previous question.
One more sent you.
Mayor, I've moved the previous question, that's non-debatable.
Not, not moving it yet, mayor.
That's non-debatable, mayor.
And I'm going to say what I'm going to say.
That's non-debatable, mayor.
Uh, Mr. Stump, who is a very learned and respected bond council, and I want to read from the ordinance. It says to provide funds from one million, five hundred thousand dollars to finance a portion of the cost of such acquisition and related costs and expenses. A portion, because this one point five million dollars, I don't think is going to be enough. Having said that, I'll take you to page two. Whereas the city hereby finds and determines that the undertaking of the project by the issuer and the leasing thereof and the other facilities to the city is desirable and needed and will benefit the inhabitants of the city and will promote the general health and welfare of the citizens and residents of the city and that the project is for a public purpose. Period. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Move the previous question.
All right, the question is to, for number five is to table, and we need to vote on that. A, a, um, yes vote is to table, a no vote is not to table, and we move on. Will, will the clerk call the roll?
Tom Oxley.
Yes.
Charles Smallwood. Benitez Jackson.
No.
Steve Hazlitt?
No.
Diane Janey?
Yes.
Krista Hodges?
Yes.
Dave Perry?
No.
The motion to table is not agreed to.
Mayor, I move that we approve the second reading of the consideration of the ordinance, uh, at this time.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Property moved in second, that we consider this as the second reading, the clerk will call the roll.
Tom Oxley.
No.
Charles Smallwood. Benitez Jackson.
Yes.
Steve Hazlitt?
Yes.
Diane Janey?
No.
Krista Hodges?
No.
Dave Perry?
Yes.
The motion's agreed to, four to three, is a second reading. We now move to number six. Consideration review written proposals to broadcast city council meetings and events.
I'm going to ask council to table this. Request for proposals until the meeting in August. When I spoke with Mr. Siner, he was not ready to, um, present a proposal for this meeting, and I spoke with Mr. McGuffin, and he was okay with that to move until our meeting in August, August eighth.
I move that we table this item number six.
Second.
We properly moved in second that we table number six till the August eighth meeting. Any discussion?
I got one question. Are these the only, how, are these the only two around that are putting it, want to put in bids? Or are we contacting everybody in the area?
Those are the two that, that we had or that we talked about the last meeting. I'm not familiar with others.
Yeah, I don't either, I just wonder, I don't want somebody to come back.
I mean, if, if someone, anyone wanted to do that, they would be welcome.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion?
And Jackson, I think we have been given a, a, another situation to con- contemplate tonight through the letter of Darren, as well as to employ. I would say that probably we ought to take that up, which may be simultaneous at that meeting, but I just point that out. The letter he's given has asked us for another factor. But. I move the previous question on the table.
Knowles in favor of tabling number six indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed tabling, no. Motion is agreed to, it is table to August eighth.
Madam Clerk, Mr. McGuffin's, uh, or report to the council looks very involved. Looks like it's almost got to be like a separate item into itself instead of combining it. Because I've, as he read through it, I had no clue what he was talking about regarding DBA and twenty-four D dash one, three, and twelve eighty times seven twenty. Uh, I, I think that, uh, it's going to take some, um, real discussion to understand what he's saying. It sounds good, but I don't understand exactly how he's arriving at that, but it looks good. He did, I was just saying, I think his, it looks good, but I think we need, needs to explain if he could, some of the, um, broadcast ease.
Brings us number seven, engineering agreements for council's approval for the following projects. A, the Virginia Street Sidewalk Project, B, the Oak Hill Fire Department Edition Project, and C, the Oak Hill City Park Project. Madam Manager?
We have Sam Rich here with us tonight from Thrasher, and he's going to go over the agreements.
All right.
And and answering questions that you may have.
If he doesn't have roles, we're not going to listen to him.
Not tonight. I am hungry today. So what we have presented, uh, this evening and what can be made available to everyone digitally for review is a master service agreement for three different projects. The renovation to the fire station, the Virginia Street sidewalks repair, uh, or renovation and, and new construction of sidewalks, as well as a master plan for the city park. Um, I'll go over, the, the way this is organized is it's a AIA governing document that would be the master terms and conditions of all of these projects, we would have one contract, and then we would have what are called service orders, which outline the fee and scope for the individual projects. So there's three service orders, which each represent the different projects that we have. Just so I'm, I'm going over the fee part of this for the projects. And I, I sent you Demeter kind of the breakdown, if you wanted to pull that up, but uh, for the fire station renovation, which we assume is a budget of one point two million dollars for renovation, uh, included in that would be architectural engineering fees. So that's architecture, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering, structural engineering, but also include geotechnical investigation, civil engineering for site development. More or less what the project will include is the addition of another apparatus bay as well as facilities inside the fire department. Um, and that, the fee for that project would be ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The Virginia Street sidewalks, this is a, a service order that we need your all's approval from first. We will also have to get approval from the West Virginian Division of Highways, uh, through their planning division, which administers these grants, which, uh, it is ultimately federal fu- funding, which is administered through, administered through the State Department of Highways. Uh, but we would have to have your all's approval of, of this to submit to them. They always do a, an independent review of their, of these costs, so they'll, they'll do their own estimate on what they. They always do an independent review of their, of these costs, so they'll, they'll do their own estimate on what they feel the engineering should cost. We'll confirm the scope of work with them, and once we have their approval, then we can proceed with that work. The third project, and I want to talk to you about more than just the agreement with this project tonight, is, there's been a lot of talk tonight about city park. Many of you are aware that there, there is a survey that has been released for this project. And, and what I will say is different about this project from the other two. We know what the scope of work is for the fire station and the sidewalks projects. It's pretty cut and dry is what the expectations are and what the outcome is. When we sat down with a couple people who were involved in the selection committee to, to choose Thrasher as the consultant for this project, what we were identified is that there, there really was not a consistent, clear vision for what this park could be. There's a lot of good ideas from the community survey. There was a lot of good ideas from the steering committee that, that led the selection process of our, of our firm to do this work. When we proposed on this project, the kind of understanding of what the project was going to be was that it was going to be the addition of a skate park, a basketball court, general improvements, new playground equipment. And when I say general improvements, things like accessibility, new sidewalks, new parking areas. But what has kind of come out of the community survey is that there are additional wants and needs from the community. What I have put together that I just want to review real quickly, and I'm going to read the survey questions that, that were released to the public. We've received two hundred and thirty responses to date, which for a, a community survey, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is, it's really good participation. Do these surveys all over the state of West Virginia in different communities? This is, this is a good response to a, a survey for a park design. The questions were, what do you feel needs improved at city park? Do you believe a regulation-sized basketball court would be utilized? Do you feel professionally-designed skate park around twelve thousand square feet would be a good feature in city park? Do your immediate family members currently visit the park? And then an open answer, additional comments. The things I want to point out that when, when people talked about the improvements that they want to see in city park, shade was an overwhelming thing, trees, canopies, shelters. There were some trees that had been cut down previously. People want an air, an opportunity to get out of the sun when they're at the park. Splash pads and swimming pools were named multiple times by multiple respondents. There's pros and cons to both of those things. One requires less maintenance and, and it's cheaper in that, it, that is the splash pad option. When you think about security, so cameras, lighting, more patrol from the police, improved playground areas, larger areas for playground, more accessible equipment that serve a broader age and user group, looking at things like rubber surfacing or rubber mulch instead of traditional mulch. Drainage was mentioned as a problem. More parking, more accessibility, improvements to the restrooms. Those are kind of the high points from the survey. In response to if they thought a basketball court would be utilized, seventy-seven percent of respondents said yes. Six percent said no, and seventeen percent said maybe. Overwhelming support for the basketball court. When asked the same question about if a skate park would be utilized, fifty-six percent of respondents said yes. Twenty-six percent said no, and eighteen percent said maybe. And I want to clarify that the original idea behind that was not just a skate park, but also a bicycle pump track that is, is good for skill building for all user groups, things like mountain biking. Instead of going out hitting the trails, you have a small controlled environment to practice in. Do yours or family members currently visit the park? Eighty percent of respondents said yes. What I am, am requesting of city council tonight is, when we were selected for this work, two key members that were part of that process were former city manager Bill Hannabass and GIS coordinator Tyler Bragg, both of which are no longer with the city of Oak Hill. I'm here on behalf of our team and the work that we have in front of us, and on behalf of new city manager Demita Johnson, that we need a steering committee established for this project that is comprised of city officials and community members. There's, there's opportunities to involve folks that are involved in the local skating and biking scene. The Little League needs to be a stakeholder in this. People that are focused on accessible play should be involved in this when we're looking at new playground elements and features. We're, we were very happy to be involved with, with this project. We need to develop a really good thoughtful master plan that will identify costs, different alternatives that, of what can be accomplished to satisfy the needs of the community. And as someone said earlier, we're wanting to create a gem for the city of Oak Hill. This is, this is a large park facility that has a lot of opportunity for improvement. We want to work with you as a partner to develop a good plan and a funding strategy. Just thinking out loud, the one point four million dollar price tag doesn't accomplish everything we just talked about. You need to supplement that with additional funds that we can help you to, to look for and find. There's tons of opportunity outright, outright now to help accomplish a project of this size. So with that, that kind of concludes my overview of what we are doing on these three projects. I'm happy to field any questions specific to, to any of the projects. I will disclaim. The, the fire station renovation, I'm not an architect. I'm, I run our land development market. So I know a lot more about the other two projects than the fire station, but I will take any questions and be able to get answers back to you.
What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Samuel Rich.
Sam.
And I, I am located in our Beckley office.
Mayor? Do you want else having?
No.
You know, if I recall, there was the city manager, GIS coordinator, myself, and Mr. Smallwood. Is that correct?
I was there.
Dayday participated maybe in the sidewalk interview.
No, we, we were there on all of them. But I'm talking about when we met later as a steering committee to make suggestions, okay? The diamond was presented by your guys with a picture. You know what I'm talking about? Here's the central location and the fields go out around it that you see in many cities. And that kind of was insisted upon, if I'm correct, Mr. Smallwood. You correct me if I'm wrong. I have to put your mayor.
I'm sorry, what was insisted upon?
The diamond approach to the fields.
By, by who?
By that committee that met with, I don't know, you know, when the, when the city manager was there and Mr. Smallwood and myself and the mayor and GIS coordinator. So.
I think the thing I would say was insisted upon is that we need to explore an option for reconfiguring the baseball fields with what makes the most sense.
But that was suggested at that time, so that it would be a gem. I mean, I'm just sure, you weren't there, obviously. So I'm just suggesting to you that that was discussed. And that Thrasher was to have gotten back with us with three tentative suggestions, models, whatever, and that didn't occur. The survey has occurred, which is good, good, great. And at that time, we talked about Little League and skateboarders and all those vested parties. Two things that we were very insisted on, and I hear you make no mention of it. And Mr. Hannabass said that it would be part of an agreement, and we may not be in agreement apart. One, that the fire department would have a festive introduction to the proposal prior to. If I make myself mud clear. Tim, do you remember that? Not to put you on, huh? Yeah. Well, we talked about a band. We talked about, we talked about a band. We talked about, you know, architectural sketches and so forth. So the city would be involved and the city would have an opportunity. So I hope, and, and Bill said it definitely would be in the final contract. We talked about a similar thing with the, the city park. So I hope that we don't drop that.
So with the fire station, I mean, basically, I think the approach with that is we have to have a design and a rendering to show the community.
Right, right. Absolutely.
At the time, once the design moves forward into schematic design and we start to develop some of those project renderings, I, I think we're happy to help facilitate any type of an event where we can show the community what improvements are being made. The scope of work specifically for the city park not only involves the survey, which has already, you know, been released, and, and we've gotten all these responses on. What we need to do now that we have information on what the community wants to see is develop those three concepts that you're talking about.
Okay.
And then have a community open house where we will present the concepts. We will present, what I'm asking for is a steering committee that we can present those two first and have an opportunity to make revisions before it goes before the community so we can get more focused feedback from this steering committee that I'm talking about.
And again, you're suggesting that steering committee be composed of?
City officials and community members that have vested interest in the key focus areas of the park. So Little League, skate park, playgrounds.
Will you, will you identify those to, to Demita? And?
And here's, with the skate park especially, we need to know what the community is really interested in. That varies a lot from very advanced types of parks to more beginner.
Yeah.
Types of parks, so.
And I think you guys brought in a representative from, from the Skate Park Association or Builders out of California, and someone was on it with us.
They're based in Arkansas. They're called American Ramp Company, and they are as part of this contract for the master plan to design the skate bike park. They're, they're an international company that's done these facilities all over, all over the country and the world, so.
Yes. And the only thing I'd say, Mayor, is that initial meetings and so forth, Mr. Smallwood and I were part of that. I'd like to remain part of that so that my grandchildren down the road and great grandchildren will be proud once again of what this council did.
So do we need to recommend other people for the steering committee for the city park project?
I think what was suggested is that Thrasher get in touch with Demita with a list of what he'd like to see, and then we would go from there, Krista. What was just stated?
I, I can provide Demita a, a written kind of request of the types of people, user groups that we're interested in interacting with. Really, I, if you had a point person identified for each user group, even if we needed to have side meetings, I'm happy to, to do a, a virtual meeting or even an in-person meeting. As I said, I'm just in Beckley with a group of skate park users or people that are interested in improvements to the playground.
We do have that.
Yes.
I, I'd say give that, just immediately, come back to us if we need to do that.
How many people, how many people are you thinking should be on this steering committee roughly? How many people?
Ten or less. You really need a focus group when we're, we're taking big picture, because there's, there's going to be push and pull from different groups. Little League may be really focused on Little League, skate park may be really focused on skate park, and it's our job to try to manipulate or not manipulate, but take the information that we're getting from these groups and come up with the best fit for everybody.
Right.
That's, that's the focus group. And then obviously, when we do these public meetings, it'll be open to everyone to come and provide feedback. Where we'll still be in the working process of modifying this plan. We, we don't want to have the public meeting until we have something to show the public of what's possible.
Exactly. When do you want this, this, this steering committee? When should it be named?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Just so that we can keep moving forward with the planning process. Ideally, we're, we're completing this master plan this, this year, leading into the fall. And we go into next year with a construction project identified by the time we hit spring construction season.
When is the, the sidewalks going to start? I mean, I'll, I'll, I guess that's what we're talking, I've kind of got caught up in the kind of mixed up a little bit, but when is the project going to start? We've been waiting on.
The construction of the sidewalk?
Like the sidewalks and things like that.
That's, that's the one contract that we have to have the DOH to approve. So unfortunately, everything is dictated by their process. Because they're administering the money, you have to do plans and specifications to their requirements. They have to review the plans. It takes time.
But is there, you have a plan? I mean?
We have, what we have given the city is a scope of work for the design and permitting of those sidewalks. DOH will have to prove that and sign off on it before Oak Hill is allowed to move forward, and they will release those funds. As far as the construction, Demita and I are kind of catching up on what this grant actually has in it in term, because this is an older grant. So we'll have to figure out what funds are actually available for, if it's just for design, if it's, they're going to have to apply for another round of construction. We have good relationships with the Planning Division at DOH, and we're going to help Demita with facilitating those conversations with, with the state. I would love to tell you it's the starting construction next year, but I'm also very cautious to say that. The things like the fire station and the park are a lot more under our control because it's city funds.
So what actually do we need on this tonight?
To approve the agreements. The engineering agreements that I've just, that he spoke about. So we need to approve each of those.
Does those in group, in agreements as Mr. Hannabass committed to include what I suggested, what I talked about? Is, is that on this or another agreement?
The city park scope of services, I know, talks about the public engagement and meeting and the multiple design of concepts. I don't know that the fire station specifically addresses, that agreement specifically addresses your request for a public awareness.
But I've heard you commit to that tonight unofficially.
That's not a big deal for us. We've worked with you guys a long time. I'm happy to help with that.
Are we asking Thrasher to plan us an open house?
Pardon?
Are we asking them to plan us an open house?
No, no. No, they were.
Asking them to show up with designs.
They were, no, we're not. They were asked to finance it and support it.
Okay, all right.
And I would ask that that be put in the minutes tonight that he was asked and unofficially agreed. So I move that we accept the agreement.
I want to hold on it for that, just, just a second. What, please explain what you mean by financing. What are the costs associated that you're?
Well, if we have to pay for a band, if we have to pay for the hot dogs, be very minimal. But would be open to the public. With what you said, here's what we're doing. We wanted to be gayla.
I understand, but I think we have.
To create excitement.
I, I just want the, the record in the minutes to say that we need to have some sort of conversation about what does that entail? What are, what are our expenses going to be?
Some understanding.
Yes.
I have no problem with that. Pepperoni rolls?
Pepperoni rolls are one thing. A band is another.
No, I'm talking about like one of the hospitals.
I'd like to, I'd take a look here for a second on this, on this number seven. And, and that is that Mr. Rich has said that we need a steering committee as soon as possible to move this thing along. Why cannot we let, give our suggestions to the city manager and let her make that decision so we can move it on? Because this council won't meet again to August eighth. We just, we'll, we'll lose another month of time on what you're asking for. I'd like to speed that up and could something you could do that you could, we can, if, if you have names, pass them on to the city manager and let her look them over and make a decision.
She supplies a list of who she's looking for. I mean, not names, but.
I know what you're saying.
Like he said, the Little League president.
Yeah.
Tez is familiar with basketball.
Yeah.
Krista's probably familiar with skateboarders. I don't know.
I, I'm not actually, but I do have some names that I think would be great for the steering, steering committee. If you want to email a list to Demita, and we can submit names to her. If we need to submit them publicly now, whatever, it's fine.
Yeah, if you'll send me the groups that you said that you would send, and then I'll take the names and try to put them into the right places.
I think someone from our safety committee should be on the group too.
What's that?
Somebody from the safety committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is that going to be part of this motion that we, that we approve the following projects? And the, the steering committee will be, will approve the, the city manager picking those names?
That's part of the motion.
Part of the motion. Because we have to move it along, and we don't want to waste another month trying to get a steering committee when we meet again.
Agree with you.
I think it's passing on to the city manager.
Can we add the chief to that list?
Yes. Fire chief.
Dayday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
His scouts are going to have to mind it.
Patrol down there wants to get built.
All right, is there a motion? Have we had a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Properly moved in second that we approve the following projects. The Virginia Street Sidewalk Project, the Oak Hill Fire Department Edition Project, and the Oak Hill City Park, and give the city manager permission to make appointments to the steering committee as requested by Thrasher. Any discussion? Hearing that we vote the motion, all's in favor, sick, I'm saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is agreed to, seven, zero, which moves us to new business. And?
Tom abstained.
Oh, six, oh, six, six, zero, yes. He, he went out.
Will you ask Tom to come back in?
Yeah, I forgot. Six, one, six, zero.
I wonder why he left. I probably left like he usually does. Okay. I'm ready.
Bring this to new business, number eight. Consideration of Emergency Funding for Roof Replacement on the Historic School on School Street.
It's John David. Mr. David.
Dr. David is there.
Um, Councilman Perry asks, put this on the list. So did you want?
Not necessarily. Uh, you know, I, I would just make a motion that we approve emergency funding of twenty-five thousand dollars for the historical school on School Street. And I will speak to the motion at the appropriate time.
All right, there's been a motion made regarding the roof replacement at the historic school. Is there a second? Is there a second? Oh, you didn't hear it. Consideration of emergency funding for roof replacement of the historic school on School Street. Been a motion made to approve certain funds. Is there a second?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, is there a second?
Where's the, coming from?
I, I said I would speak to the motion.
Speak to it when it comes to discussion.
Right.
Okay.
You second, yeah. Property moving second. Now, any discussion?
Okay. Each of us, I'm sure, has heard Dr. John David here time after time after time. Whether we agree or disagree, uh, there is a service being provided by Sal's. There's another building in Oak Hill, potential to become to decay. We initially agreed or voted to give money contingent upon the county commission. He has done his due diligence to meet with the county commission, who has refused time after time to put him on the agenda. He's not asking for the hundred and twenty-five or hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the entire roof. He's asking for money to patch the roof so that further decay wouldn't occur. Now, I think we also, uh, know the work that he does here and in the town, monies that have been committed. I think we all somewhat screen, uh, uh, would like to see the area cleaned up a little bit or done, uh, in terms of trucks and so forth, but, uh, you know, and what, the question was, where would it come from? I understand that the BNO tax from McDonald's is paid or coming due?
It will be, part of it should be this quarter that we're in, we'll receive some payment, and then in three months, we'll receive some more payment.
And I had asked the city manager to give me a projection because anytime I present something, I like a, to present a resolve or, as Mr. Smallwood said, money. Was that amount given to me for the quarter, the entire project?
The entire project.
Which was estimated to be forty thousand dollars, correct? So, Mr. Smallwood, I would suggest that the money come from that, or, uh, would give to me the latitude or our new treasurer's latitude to decide where. But my recommendation or suggestion would be from that BNO tax.
I'd like to ask Dr. David a question.
It's kind of my question there, like, how much is that going to cover if we just, for a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar project? I mean, I, I was just wondering, like, if we give you twenty-five thousand for a hundred and, how much is it going to cost to replace the whole roof? Hundred and thirteen thousand, maybe? For how much? That'll cover the whole thing? That's a good idea. Gone a few. I didn't figure you'd get by that easy.
Sorry, what was the question, ma'am?
Who, who's doing the work for you?
We have a quote from Shield, a company that does, uh, sealant and guarantees the work for twenty-five years.
And they're just going to do it over the auditorium, like twenty-five is enough to cover the auditorium section that's getting so much damage right now?
That's the section right now that we are focused on. It is potentially causing the entire building to be in jeopardy.
Do you have the quote? Did you send it to us, the quote for, for this already, or is that something?
The quote that I sent you a long time ago was for, you know, an entire extensive, uh, uh, repair. Since then, we have contacted a company called Shield. They came a week or two ago and have, uh, provided us with the quote I'm sharing with you now.
We do have a written quote.
It's in here, Sean.
I'm sorry.
You do have a written quote that you could provide us?
Um, I don't, I, I wasn't prepared to bring one tonight, no.
But you can make it available.
Yes, of course.
So I would include as part of my motion that the payment not be made until such time that the written quote is received.
You second that?
Second, yeah.
I, my, my question is, why won't the county commission talk to anybody? Their public body, it looked like to me they would, uh, let anyone from the county come in. When I was at the courthouse as circuit clerk, I went to the county commission meetings all the time, just walked in, sat down. But I understand now you have to go through a, an application form?
We have to submit an application form, uh, approximately ten days or more in advance for consideration. There's no problem walking in and sitting down, they, uh, but there is a problem being on the agenda.
There's a problem even being on the agenda to speak.
And to have good consideration, yes. I, I.
I saw the email that, uh, Dr. David forwarded to me from the commission. They said it had already been heard once and they didn't, wasn't going to have him back. Uh, I believe it's a little bit more than what we see. I don't think they're too fond of Dr. Dave. I mean, I think it's gotten personal. I mean, I, maybe I'm wrong, Doctor, but I, that's the way, that's the way I read it, so.
I try to be respectful to all and try to be a force for good for the community.
Well, I, I have to agree with Councilman Perry. You do a lot of good, not, not just at that building, but here it's for and throughout the county, so I don't think this council would even consider it otherwise. I mean.
Well, that's an emergency shelter. It's Red Cross, it's nine eleven, food pantries, you know, we have the community radio station, we have the former Curves program, uh, there for.
You're housing a bunch of people right now, correct, that are doing repairs to home?
Right, exactly, you know, to, to repair houses. So, we're stumbling along best we can.
Tom, if I recall, you were going to go with, and you probably did.
They wouldn't let us on the agenda.
Oh. But in, in terms of what's sad is the Canal County Commission gave Dr. David money for projects on the lower end.
The Canal County Commission did give us, um, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, it was, uh, not a very difficult, uh, presentation. And most impressively, um, the next day, we were called and asked when we could pick up the money or should they mail it? And it came within a week.
And I'm not sure it's just Doc, Dr. David, because I don't think they have turned loose of any of those federal funds. And I know it's not Dr. David solely because our church requested some money for feeding. They refused to take it when they said they would. So, you know, so, you know, I'm just saying they've not entertained from anyone or approved anyone other than to suggest they were going to commit it all to broadband and ask cities to belly up broadband in larger cities, a larger percentage than the smaller cities.
I might elaborate on the Canal County Commission. It was for home repairs, and I have diligently tried and have succeeded in making sure the home repairs that we did were in Canal County. Since Montgomery, for example, is split between two counties, as we all know, I have quite, uh, extensively tried to make sure that the home repairs we did were, if in Montgomery, on Morris Drive or other places that clearly were in, um, in Canal County.
Mayor, by unanimous consent, uh, I think Mr. Willis would like to speak, if that would be permitted by unanimous consent.
Any have Jachim? I was gonna say, the only, the only thing I was going to say is the ARPA funding that they have and everything, they've only allocated a small portion just because they had to, but they, they haven't committed, uh, county commission hasn't committed none of it. But there's several people that are coming to the county commission wanting some of the funding, but they're not really, they're, they're not picking out who they are and aren't. They're just telling everybody to kind of hold off right now.
All right, thank you.
Just to clear.
All right, been properly moving second regarding the twenty-five thousand um, sealant that could help save the historic school on School Street. Any more discussion?
With the recommendation that it come from the BNO tax and/or the discretion of the treasurer. Did you turn it where from?
All right, any more discussion? Hearing that we vote to motion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to, seven zero, which without any objection, folks, I'm going to move down to number twelve because we have someone who's on the agenda for that, and she's been waiting patiently for hours. Um, the consideration of planning commission recommendation to rezone four point four five acres at one seven eight Old Fayetteville Road from general business B two district to recreational business B dash R district to allow the operation of a RV trailer park for thirty to thirty-five units. And I think you want to speak to that, don't you? And your angel leg. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm wanting to get that rezoned for a, um, instead of just the commercial to rec- recreational for RV and camping. What, and it's right off of Route nineteen, it's easy access, easy to see, and I think it'll bring the community a lot of business considering the New River Gorge and the whole tourist state.
You have a name for it?
Gypsy Soul Campground.
I saw that sign out there. How far back does that go?
Um, it goes back to the High Line, it's about two miles back.
Oh, two miles back?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so there's plenty of space.
Okay.
And the planning commission does recommend this.
I'll move, we accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve it.
Second.
Property moving second, that the city council would accept the planning commission's recommendation that this property be rezoned. Is there any more discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
As expected. The work's already proceeded, correct?
Yes, it has proceeded.
Looks very nice. Uh, I understand that the zone and Councilman Jackson, aren't you on the zoning?
I am.
I understand, as D'Amita said, you all took this up.
Yeah.
But I understand part of the information at time was that the permit for it had been approved prior to the rezoning request.
Yeah.
Which I don't see that, yeah. I don't see that as an issue, but I like to be sure the minutes show that.
It was the license, she applied for her license and we had not checked.
Right, and, and again, I, I hear what Councilman Tez is, it's a mistake, but I'd still like to see it noted that there was a mistake. That, so that in the future, you know, we don't get the cart before the horse. I think it's an excellent idea. I think it looks good. Only have one question off the record. Are you going to continue to let politicians put their signs out front?
No.
Oh.
I was afraid that's what you'd say.
Make a few bucks off of that. Is there a second? It's been moved, it's been moved, is anyone?
Second.
Property moving second, we'll vote, any more discussion? Hearing that we vote to motion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got you out a little bit earlier, didn't I?
Were you patient, you thought?
Yes, thank you. We now move to number nine, appointed chairman for the Oak Hill Sanitary Board.
Does a sanitary board not choose their own chairman?
The council has to appoint the chairman, and it's either the mayor or the city manager.
So was Bill on there last time?
Bill was, yes.
I move, I move that we appoint the new city manager as chairman of the sanitary board.
Second.
Property moving second, that the chairman of the Oak Hill Sanitary Board be the new city manager. Any discussion? Hearing that we vote to motion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Uh, those, those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero. Which moves to number ten, appoint new city manager D'Amita Johnson to the following boards, commissions, and committees. A, the structural inspection board, the recreation committee, the beautification committee, the rail trail committee, the amphitheater commission, the homeless opioid abuse advisory committee, the street vendor ordinance committee, the future city hall building negotiating committee, and the committee to select organization to produce building design guidelines and artistic renditions. Now I add an element, also the kitchen sink committee, in which is the only one she's missed.
I move that we appoint the city manager to A through I at this time, but with no increase in pay.
We're property moving second, that the city manager be appointed to every commission in the city. A through I. Any discussion?
Did you want to appoint it to all those committees? Yeah, did you, did you, did you want that?
It comes with it, yes.
Well, now vote to motion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to, seven zero. Eleven, the coal severance budget revision. Madam City Manager.
This is the end of the year budget revision for our coal severance fund. We estimated the fund balance to be one thousand dollars. It was actually twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. So we just need to increase, um, the expenditures to match that, and I've put those in streets and highways. That's where we use our coal severance funding.
I move that we approve the coal severance budget revision.
Property moving second, any discussion? Hearing that we vote to motion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to, seven zero. Which now moves us to department reports. I think we'll start with the streets there, Mr. Kirk. I think that, uh, your report's already been presented in the pocket, has it?
Yes.
Nope.
Oh.
I've been having Mr. Johnson.
Okay. You have any?
We're finishing up Trump. We're going to start milling, uh, Wednesday and paving it back. Start another project in Hidden Valley. And we got two projects, one on Miller, one on Beach, replacing some culvert that's failing. The price of culvert has gone through the roof. So, uh, and, and, and act, actually getting ahold of it, it's going to be our big problem.
Council, any questions of Mr. Kirk?
One question. The potholes or that the utilities are creating, where they're digging across the streets. One on, on Highland, Highland has been there for a number of months.
Since last winter.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And then the one, you are on top of it.
One on Church Street?
Yeah.
Yep.
And that, of course, they kind of feel that, but it.
We, we talked to them the other day, and we really need to look and, 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 and doing something with the water company and the gas company. That's our biggest thing. They, they have a contractor that they contract out of Huntington, West Virginia to come and fix their cuts. Well, that guy don't come up here unless he's got thirty days worth of work.
Right.
Well, then, when he gets here, he can't get them all done. So then it's, gets behind and gets behind and gets, and the boys is working there, they keep going, they keep digging. So we're need to, we need to look at a bond and have the water company and the gas company post a bond. If they don't come back and fix their holes, then we take that bond and we get it fixed.
And/or, a, and I think you're on top of it, as I said. Would it be possible to make an agreement with them that we would do the work?
I mean, we do.
For a fee.
We do, we do. Because I I'll be honest with you, I hire Richard Bailey a lot to come and fix some of ours.
Right.
Because I'm 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 spread out.
It's too thin, yeah.
Hard for us to do patching. So I call Richard and Richard Bailey and his guys come in, they dig it out and they put it back, doing fantastic job.
So.
And that's what I mentioned to these guys, why don't they hire a local contractor to keep up with theirs? The gas company can do it and the water.
So I would ask that on the whatever's appropriate and whatever the recommendation is, at the next meeting that we consider ordinance or whatever necessary to to create a bonding situation as the as as
And I and I think.
The street manager has recommended.
They might be in ordinance.
I think there is.
And then we work good with the water companies and we try not, you know, if we break something. When we break something, we'll we'll, they don't charge us to fix what we break. But then again, you know, you've got holes that you're digging all over town.
Yeah.
You need to address.
Timely, timely.
Yeah.
So do you recommend we consider a bond or?
Yeah, we need to do something, I I know, I don't know, Bill always talked to a fellow that used to be in charge of the water company in Huntington, Charleston. And it worked out pretty good, but they got some new guys and I don't know who they are. But, you know, maybe we can reach out to somebody in Charleston.
So I I would ask that on the August agenda, that you and Demita come back with what you feel is a satisfactory recommendation.
Okay.
Dayday, you could fashion that that bond after division of highways, the ones they use.
Right.
And they're getting them to recent, release it, you'd be you'd be just as tough as they are.
Sure. And like I said, then and like I said, the the water company has issues with, the state has issues with the water company fixing on their line. Also, I mean, it's not just our streets, it's the county roads and the state roads, so.
Gas company in the past was always real good.
They have been, but they, like I said, they got also got some new rules and and stuff. But, you know, usually when you call them, they fix it right there in the water company.
Mr. Kirk. Um, right there at Pizza Hut where all those trees have grown up, is that us or the state?
We're gonna, we're gonna have the guys cut it, we just want to do it today, but they got other, I've got to provide two flaggers for the favors. So they got some of it done today and then we'll get somebody down there.
All right, thank you.
Hey, is there anything that we can do with the potholes up there at where Fu Land used to be, they got cones in the road now.
They're fixed.
That's private property and they had a contractor go in and dig that out.
Okay, they're fixing, so they're fixing them, right?
Where are you supposed to be?
Okay.
I don't know, the guy that they got doing it is it's can't depend on him.
Okay.
Yes, we need newer health to locate over there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dayday.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Fire Chief Richardson, your report was in the pocket. So any questions from him that those, you've already read it? Yep, any questions of of the chief?
Mayor, at the appropriate time, not now, I would ask that we enter into an executive session to discuss a potential financial matter obligation suit regarding the fire association department and department. But I I would prefer that we finish this and and, you know.
Are you talking about that for tonight?
Yes. You know.
All right, we have a report from the economic development coordinator, you have something? Just read other than. Okay. All right, yes, I thought it was there. Any questions of the economic development director?
I got a question. I know we did a press, looked like a press release or for the softball team, where where do you send that out to? Okay. And so how do we, how do we pick who gets on like the, because I'm just where I coach and stuff, I may wonder if it's on my kids on there, I was wondering, like, how do we pick in who goes on news release and?
Well, I mean, the press releases are just done for whoever, yeah. Anybody can send press releases out about any, anything that they go to whatever, just send it to the newspaper.
You have to pay for it?
No.
Okay.
They and they pick it up once they decide to run, so it's, they send one in and it doesn't get ran, or you go to send one in and you get some interviews, people calling for interviews.
Okay.
It's whatever the news determines is worth it to pay their second.
Okay.
The video you showed tonight, was that the video?
That was the promotional video, yes, we got that video plus three thirty second clips that we it's not as long and lengthy as that full advertisement.
Do you think we should include some, something about the new schools? Yeah.
They got some drone footage and it could be in one of the other clips and just not, not that one. Uh, because they uh, they edited down different sections for different different areas in the city.
Can you send us those other three?
And concert response, the the walking trail. Particularly the the out on Needle Side. I mean, you know, there's a lot of county. Was it, okay. Never been out. Oh, okay, okay. I I didn't identify the trails, but anyway, focus on Oak Hill, I mean it's fine.
All right, there's a report, a report from the police chief, any questions of him?
I have one question.
Yes.
What is the status of the, I don't know what the right word is, not oasis, what was it that we talked about where you get to be able to identify where the cars are and safety officers? State was working on some kind of new software or hardware or making sense?
Oh, it's, we're fully running with our new
Identif-
GPS?
With GPS, yeah. Yeah. So she has one project, it's fully operational.
Spillman.
Spillman is fully operational.
Tyler.
Our court system. Fully operational.
So that.
Everything's up and running, new hiccups, a few more training sessions.
Great, because I know really you said it should be up and done by July. July. Thank you, thank you.
Anything else for the police chief question? All right, I think we city manager. You have, you just got started, is there any kind of report?
I did have a report.
You have it.
Yeah, any questions to the city manager?
I have a comment, which I'm sure would expect. You know, I'd just like to say this to the chief, to Dayday, to Tim, to our treasurer and to Demita. And not to take away from Mr. Hannabas. But I would like to say that what I have seen up to this point, it has been a very good transition. All the persons who are working in those positions, as well as Mrs. Johnson, have been very receptive, very responsive, and she has made it very clear, I may not agree with council and I'll let you know it, but I will carry out the wishes of the council. So I appreciate their willingness to accept what I see in terms of philosophy and or, of course, she was working before the sixth code with with Bill, but I appreciate it and I would commend you, the treasurer, the chief, Dayday and the fire chief. I think good things will come through her leadership and direction. So I would say thank you.
Demita, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
I would have to concur with that, those comments made regarding the the streets, the police, fire, economic development and the city manager, I've called the city manager a few times since she took over. Very responsive, very helpful, and I'm very much appreciate it, I thank you. And and I hope that the people of Oak Hill really understand and appreciate that fire department, those men, women who volunteer for and go out on fires for twenty dollars each. That they do such a service and I I tremendous service to the town and I I was hope that the people of Oak Hill realize what they have with the Oak Hill Volunteer Fire Department, I've always been very impressed by their professionalism, the work they do. And I'll say the same for the police chief and the Oak Hill Police Department. Always, this is how I, but someone's asked me a several times, what about the police department in Oak Hill? What do you think about them? I said, I've been here three years as mayor, not once have I had a call complaining about the chief, not once have I had a call complaining about any officer ever. To me, I think that's a good sign that the public's not complaining, that they are not calling me to say I don't like this one or that one, he's done this to me, in three years, not one call. Now, I will tell you, I've had several calls from other towns thinking that I was the mayor of those towns and they were upset. And I listened to, I listened to their complaints and then after a while I started perk up because I said, he's not one of ours. He's the next town or two towns over, so I've always glad to say, I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't help you, it's not one of ours. I've had several of those calls, several from for the wrong town. Even one time I had a call thinking I was the mayor of Hinton, I don't know how I got tangled up over in Summers County, but I had to point out that I was not there at all. And 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 also a great deal of appreciation to Mr. Kirk and the hard work the street department does. And I just think it's good to tell people these things every so often, it's easy to complain about people, but I think you should be just the same complimenting them as well. So and and I say that with all sincerity on all of you and I was, like I say, chief, no one's complaining.
You just jinxed them.
Not one person has called me to complain. So that's a good sign, I think. Any other comments for the, for our questions for the apartment heads? All right, move to council comments at large. Any comment?
I'd like to add my kudos to the eight to ten year old girl softball. I think that's nice when I I called the mayor of Barbersville, told him to treat him nice, so probably because I called him, he won't. And one other thing, I'd like to congratulate Jordan Tickle, the daughter of Krista and Adam Hodges. Teaches me or reinforces my appreciation of fit and all that they do. She went to, she went to the States, went there, went to the nationals and finished tenth in the business, business machines for future business leaders of America. And there was even two countries represented. One scares China and Canada, so I commend her, she will cry.
Thank you, Tom.
Maybe we can do a press release. Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
It's very good, please. I think that's all I have, man.
Okay. Present her with a resolution from the council.
Oh, my God, I think she would die.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, we can work on it.
You're never gonna get her here, so that's okay.
She won't show. She won't show.
Mom can receive it on her behalf.
Well, maybe you can make, yeah, maybe you can accept it. Ward two, anyone on ward two comments, including Mr. Hazlitt, who I think is in Georgia.
Yes, mayor, I'd like to echo congratulations to Demita and the girls softball teams, I think it's great and I'm glad we're moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else in two, all right?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smallwood.
Uh, one, the the cameras on the Harlem Heights Trail. Those haven't been installed yet.
Right, and that's why we're looking at that to see how to get it back to the police station.
Right, and there was something about a kiosk around the site as scout cabin.
I think it's when the, yeah, I think it's when the park's gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna put that up.
Uh, the signage for the dog park. Has that been done, we mentioned it a while back.
I don't know, do you know anything about that? I'll check into that.
Okay, question, we have a job opening within the city, do we post that job?
We do at different times, I mean, we post, we post things on social media. And we accept applications a lot, I mean, when somebody brings in one and we'll go back through those. We have it posted in the past with job service or on the news, in the newspaper, we normally don't do that. Unless the police department.
Okay, so that's the posting of all city jobs.
Well, like I said, in the past, we have not done, if we're hiring a receptionist or a clerk in the office, we haven't done that.
But you find that usually they're filled before you, the need arises, I mean, just like the one with when Kim left.
Right.
Not all the time, but sometimes.
But I think we missing a lot of people when we don't advertise the job.
And we can, a lot of times we, somebody's already applied, I mean, somebody's applied and we just interview them. We've had something.
I think you keep their resumes for a year, is that correct?
But my point was, we're missing some people who might
Apply.
Apply, yeah.
We have, we did one, well, it's been a few years and we didn't get a lot of people, but we may now.
The city attorney. Me personally, I think he should be at all meetings.
We can ask him to do that.
Either him or somebody from his office or a designated.
I can, I'll talk to him about that, I don't know.
I don't know how everybody else feel about it, but you know, there's probably some legal things we do that may not be up to par.
I'll talk to him about his availability.
Again, I'll bring up the ADA compliant for all playgrounds. And I think the the Boy Scout Jamboree is in twenty twenty three. I think. What are we doing towards, are we doing anything toward that or advertisement or talking to some of their leaders?
We have not. Not that I know, have we ever done anything, they're pretty self sufficient and they stay. They right, they contact us for projects.
Okay, okay.
Didn't they plant the trees along the trail a few years ago, about Thaco, those trees?
They kind of stand their own silos down there.
Yeah, but I think we could benefit a little bit more than what we have in the past.
As far as
Them doing projects, yeah.
High quality work. Maybe Aaron can reach out to them and and see what their plans are.
Now, is there any way you can notify us of the new businesses that that? Now, is there any way you can notify us of the new businesses that, that live into the area? Uh, because I just happened to look up on the Black Bear Bakery that opened up the other day. Very good food, too.
Black Bear's next to Ice Cream Shop.
Right. And there was, I think it's Legends Barber Shop.
Yes. Sometimes we don't know either because they don't apply for a license, so we have to we have to track them down. Black Bear Bakery did apply. They weren't one of them.
Again, you know, because they need our support.
I got one question to meet up, and, and this may be a future agenda item, but can we get an update on the ATV trail? Like, uh, they were supposed to like, is there any? Yeah, the river. I haven't heard anything about it. I've just wondered if there's any update or we can get them to, or somebody to come talk about it, see where we're at.
They're still mapping it out, I believe, and doing studies.
Have they picked, they even picked the trailhead yet?
No, they have not.
Okay.
It'd be an update.
Any comments from Ward one?
We've talked about signage for Oak Hill for a long time. Where are we at?
The beautification committee hat is working on it right now. They, they sent me a what they'd like for the sign to look like. We have the Eric Michelle. Michelle, he is the one that's gonna, uh, design it and build it. So he's ready to do that. We're ready, getting ready to start on that.
Could you share that with us?
The
What they sent to you?
Yes, I can. I will.
Are we gonna have more than one?
This one is the one, uh, off nineteen that we talked about several times about where we had the issue with the ownership. That's the one for now.
We, we have a representative here from the beautification committee if he could address your question maybe. By unanimous consent.
So we do have a sign that we're gonna, we're gonna put on the property we already have allocated. We're working on another sign to go, we're talking to Casey Bowling about putting another sign over there right at Appalachian Drive. So you'll be able to get two signs. But we did, uh, we, we did get, finally, the group is, uh, come together on a, a idea of what they want it to be and everything. So there, there, it is moving. And then also, um, at City Park, um, we made a deposit, uh, on some artwork and some sculptures and some things that's gonna be going in at the City Park, um, to make it look a little bit better and be more inviting. And yeah, so there, there is some ideas that are coming. Um, and it is moving. So we've already made some deposits. And I know that the sign, uh, the sign is just in the first first couple of stages of the approval of the, of the design. So we should have those back pretty soon, actually. Because it's gonna move pretty quick now that the land is allocated out there. So that sign will come to fruition pretty fast. The other sign, we're hoping to be shortly after.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from Ward one?
Young Krista.
Nope, I'm good.
Uh, Mr. Smallwood said, does anyone agree with him? I don't wanna be a Pollyanna, but, uh, I'm not sure. I know when I was with Kroger Company and I was with the Board of Education, that in terms of job postings, if you had established a precedent, you were expected to follow that, such as when the applications could be made available and so forth. So you might wanna look at that. With, with, when you don't, when you have some extra time. Uh, also, I agree, you know, we've had a lot of discussion. We've been, there's been a lot of insinuations that the city attorney should be here. So you said you'd check on that. And I'm surprised Mr. Smallwood didn't bring this one up, but I understand it's in, according to Mr. Kirk, the Ellis sign. You're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, the other thing, you know, I, I agree, let's put the ATV trail update on there for August. The recommendation for the bond. Uh, and I'd like to hear a report from the beautification committee at this point. If possible, since Lively, Kevin, whoever that organization is, at least once. And of course, where are we with streetscape? What's the status or what's going on with that? I know they hired someone, right?
Yes, and I've talked.
And that might be on your list. I don't know.
It is. The Chapman Technical Group is the engineering firm that was selected. They are going to prepare their engineering agreement, scope of work, and, um, send that to us.
Let's see. And the only other thing I'd like is, is, uh, some information, please, on the status of the Hopkins, uh, house on, is it Broadway?
Yeah.
What's the status of that?
We were by there today and it looked, to me, it looks like nothing has been completed. Um, I think they had some issues with the inspector, the building inspector.
Who would be who?
Um, Alan Ballard.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. Nothing's been done.
So if I'm correct, and again, I keep saying my memory serves me, he was to have given us a contractual, a contract plan or engineering plan or something. If I, am I in error? Did I dream that?
He was supposed to give us a plan of what he intended to do.
Okay. Have we ever received that? Okay, in terms, and I know Mr. Hennebach mentioned this before he left, in terms of the construction, I hear you indicate that Mr. Ballard has perhaps been engaged and made some suggestions with the improvements. And certainly that's not the council talking, but those are things that he will have to do, correct?
Yes.
Now, what, and, and this I don't remember, what kind of agreement did we have with him or make in terms of time or did we drop? What we had started?
We rescinded the order to demolish.
So at this point, what can we do? To I don't know.
I think it would have to be rescored.
Rescore it.
I think it would have to be rescored.
Okay. Sure. unanimous consent, but the fire chief gets to speak to that.
I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Ballard, Building Code Inspector from the county in regard to that project. It was his, it was his intention to go by and see the gentleman. He has failed to meet with him. He's been by there numerous times, but Mr. Ballard was going to issue a stop work order in regard to the construction because there was a fire at the location. And according to the
Since he started the remodeling?
It should have never happened. It should have never started because according to the International Building Code, there has to be a structural engineer and architect analysis because of the fire damage. They don't know if the roof, if the floor joists, if all the construction is safe and equitable to continue the construction on. That should have never moved ahead.
And Bill suggested that.
Yes. So I just wanna let you know that. I don't know if he, if he ever completed, discussing that with the gentleman.
How would we know if that stuff's completed before, like we take votes on it, like?
Uh, probably just communication from the Building Code Inspector's office to
And probably we should have listened to Mr. Hennebach.
Well, your recommendation from the, the structural inspection board from inspection, when the damage was done, as you know, what the recommendation was, the structural inspection, inspection board. And it wasn't because of the gentleman. It was the concern of the condition of the structure. So that's where you are with that. And, and D'Amita might call up with Alan Ballard and see if anything's been done.
So I would ask that it be rescored, re-investigated with the participation of Mr. Ballard. Is that reasonable? You felt comfortable with that, D'Amita?
Yes.
That's a request. If you want a motion, I'll put it in motion. Okay. Last thing I have is that, again, I would request an executive session for pending personnel slash potential for financial commitment obligation on behalf of the council with the fire uh, chief. And I would also ask to extend that executive session for matters of a personnel matter.
Is that right now or next agenda?
Now. I think it's timely that we do it.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Steve, can you hear?
Yes.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
While at once. We're gonna call you on your cell phone.
Okay.
Okay. And go. Yeah, if you can call him. So I'm gonna take you off here.
Okay.
I will end this meeting.
All right.